Okay, I just would like to point out that, and I don't mean this in a confrontational way to you as a board member, but I do serve the board, I report to the board. The board did vote 5-0 unanimously to allow this issue to be decided by the Secretary of Education. And I asked the board permission if I could advocate for our children, for the option they gave us, a three-building option. I do believe that we're supposed to respond to our community, but I would remind everybody here that this district doesn't belong to this school board, or to the superintendent, or to the teachers, or even to this community. It belongs to all of those people. It belongs to those folks in New Mexico who pay our salaries, who have to pay the bill for our buildings, who expect our education programs to be aligned with some kind of a model that makes good sense on behalf of our children. For me personally, with a moral issue, I work for our children. I work alongside our staff, and I will advocate for them as long as they advocate for children. And I report to the school board. I think that's the appropriate way to approach this job as a superintendent. And I don't get my way all the time, and I walk around sometimes pretty upset about it, and I understand why some people would feel that way at this particular point. As a professional learning community, I believe that we are allowed to have opposite views, and that we can respect them without making it personal. And in a professional learning community, we typically go with the consensus, and the consensus of this board was to leave it to the Secretary of Education. She made a decision, and so our responsibility is to back her up, and this board. That's the way I've done that. So, what I'd like to start with tonight, President Kemp, board, got a couple of real estate items on the agenda, at least part of my report, anyway. We have, I think I've mentioned this before in a previous meeting, we have an opportunity to take on Lark's Loop down there at the Plaza Center. To go forward with that, our attorneys have recommended that we do an environmental site assessment. It costs about $2,000. And I think there was some question last time as to what exactly is that? And I think President Kemp pointed out that it looked to him like it was a number of surveys rather than an actual physical assessment of the petroleum that might be in the ground in a way of still, or some other environmental problem that we might have to be liable for later on. And that is not what they're doing, and so President Kemp is right. What they will do is a historic survey of the community, see how that lot came to be, how that property came to be, and they do a number of things. They look at geological surveys, they look at other things. They do talk to people and organizations that have been involved in that piece of property. At some point, they tell us that, with pretty good reliability, at least according to their process, procedure, that we are, we're not at risk for buying the property. So that's what they're going to do. So unless the board tells me not to do that, I intend to go forward and get a site assessment for that. And the rationale for it is, I know that we don't have an instructor in place to ideally put someone in there to instruct our young people in customer service, and servicing a vehicle, detailing a vehicle, keeping the accounting to go with that. That may not happen immediately, but we've done a little bit of a scrub of a budget, and Lee and I have come to, and we had no help from the warrant, transportation. We could probably get our $2,000 back within a year just by servicing our own vehicle by our own staff or students. So my hope would be that we could go ahead and do that, that we'll save that much money for the district, the property comes at no cost if we get a clean environmental site assessment, and we, at the very least, we get to service our own vehicles at a saving, and at the most, we get to serve our children, our students, by allowing them to get into the vocational arena that I just described, accounting, customer service, and serving vehicles. There was some discussion about whether or not we'd be liable for putting our kids out there, or a vehicle driving down the road and have an oil plug come out, or something like that, and the engine blow up, which I certainly wouldn't want that to happen to anybody. But our insurance folks have told us that other schools have done this, and what you do is you have the customer sign a release from liability, and you have the students have their parents release them from any kind of thing that might happen on site that could be dangerous. And I really can't think of anything that would be any more dangerous than maybe perhaps walking to school on ice or something, it's just really part of the deal. So I want to go forward with that.
Well, Dr. Hune, when you say service our own vehicles, what are you talking about?
We have, well, I think you're fully aware of the vehicles that we have. We have, what, four, three Suburbans, one Expedition, two Suburbans, and two Sedans? And then anything else that the bus park might have if we take them on. Now, we can't get a bus in there, but they do know.
That's what I'm saying, so you've got six or eight vehicles? I'm just saying.
How many have you got?
Yeah, we need some parking.
Okay, so that's eight. Warren's got one, that's nine, so we have about.
I think we have a total of 15, because that's how much we pay for insurance.
There it is, the expert, we have 15.
Okay, because somebody told me one time you're thinking about the buses, and yeah, they.
We're not going to get buses, yeah. That'd be great, we could.
You're gonna have to make it two stories.
So that's one item, real estate. The other one is, and I'll just quickly say a couple preceding remarks, and then turn it over to Mark. But we have an opportunity to take our young people down to a building that's been donated to us down by the car wash. I don't know the exact address, but we have an opportunity to teach our young people how to take a building down from top to bottom, and then get a donation for the property by the people who own the car wash next door. So, Mark, you want to talk more about that for us?
Bob and Kevin Harris have a town, called this particular house on Main Street, and they want to give it to the FFA chapter. And what we would do is, we'd structure the house, because it's not going to be manually because of the neighborhood properties. We've talked with luxuries that own the car wash there, they would actually make a donation to the chapter, we would give them to the properties. So it would actually just create a fun life for your few kids involved. Other than what the value of education would be out of that, that's really got to lean in doing this.
Mr. Hunter, if he would be the possessor, the gun for whatever.
That's what he didn't want. Luxury would make his own decisions.
He's gonna pay to dispose of the.
No, we are, man, he's paying that back.
Some of that salvageable, instead of lumber.
Some. The problem that you run into is, some of that house is probably rusted on. CID won't accept that lumber being used in something else other than animal shelters or firewood or that kind of thing, unless it has a great stamp on it.
Not asking for action tonight, but in June, to assume those two properties, one of them temporarily here, just for, I guess, what, five or six months at the most?
Yeah.
Well, probably running that. Obviously, we have it down.
Is there any vessels in there?
According to Bob, no. Ben, the lid pants, been hit with some.
I have a question, Dr. Truhune.
You want to recognize Mr. Sucher?
I'm back here, and I'm loud enough. So we're acquiring all these buildings. Have we looked into how much insurance is gonna cost, plus the insurance on the two vacant buildings we have? We're burning up all these costs, 2016, 2017, we're losing close to $400,000. This consolidation, we don't have a running budget on it. Do you guys have a budget on it, of how much it's gonna cost us? No. That should have been the first thing on a businessperson's mind when we went into this consolidation, was how much was it gonna cost us? Not how much it was gonna save. What it was gonna cost, then minus, then what we're gonna save. As businesspeople, you go in with a prospectus.
Right. And as businesspeople, we're gonna go through the budget here in just a few minutes, and I'd welcome your input on it, because this is gonna be.
Well, I'm just a little upset, because that wasn't done first. That should have been the first thing, and these questions should be asked by the board, not by me. I'm a concerned citizen, and I feel, just like Robert said, you're working for us. And those are some of the questions I have. I don't know about everybody of you out here, guys.
That's true.
But I'm looking at, what are we spending? We know what we're saving, but we're already $4,000 short of that next year. And we keep adding on, insurance. We don't know, have you looked into the insuring the old buildings yet?
Yes, we have. There is no cost or additional cost for insuring Lark's Loop. We have not looked into the building we're gonna keep for three or four months, and I'm not so sure we want to insure that building for that long, because we're gonna tear it down.
Well, but any part of land, you're gonna have to insure it if you own it, some sort.
We plan to give it up immediately.
So they don't have to pay taxes.
To who?
To who?
Ray Luxury.
Who?
Me.
As far as that, if you want me to, want me to respond to some of that, or not?
Yeah, great.
Well, I just want to say that whenever you do a construction project at a public entity, there are rules and parameters surrounding it, and one of those is sometimes you have to get sealed bids, depending on how much the cost might be. Sometimes you have to get another kind of bidding process. And so to come out in front and say that, for example, moving playground equipment's gonna cost as much ahead of time before you've had a chance to put it out for bid and get that back, it's unreasonable to expect that. The same thing with moving a modular, those are usually done by a bid process also. We can get in the ballpark, and that's what we've given, we've given a ballpark figure. As far as everything else, you know, I think I gave an interview to the Raton Roar not too long ago. Very astute young lady came and asked me, are there any hidden costs? Of course there are hidden costs. There's always hidden costs. So we made a, we made a projected estimate, I've shared that with the board, we're gonna try to stay within it. And I've even got some help from the board. I mean, they've steered me in certain directions. Mr. Hunterfield's class, and previous classes are out there busting their tails, I got a picture up here a little bit later, doing some of the work for us for a certain amount. So we're helping college students, high school students, and we're doing this in-house for a much cheaper price than would be if we went out to bid for a local construction company. Though there are some things we'll have to get them, get help from. We can't, for example, bring Phil in to the place where the playground equipment's gonna go. That's gotta be done by a professional. We're not sure whether we can remove the asphalt internally, is that within our own resources, or outside? So that might be a cost, or it might not, we're still working on that. The discussion about whether we're moving from one place to the other, Gonzalez, is a valid question. My point in sharing that with the board was to keep them in the loop as we were thinking and moving along. If they want me to wait, if the majority of the board wants me to wait until a final decision is made, I would not recommend it, because I appreciate your input, and if that's what you want, that's what I'll do. But those were thoughts and ideas along the way. We're not gonna move the Wellness Center, at least not tomorrow, this year.
They actually don't.
Maybe down the road, primarily because it's too expensive. We're not gonna move the central office, we investigated that, I shared that with the board, and we're not gonna do that, it's too expensive. We've gotta keep things simple and under cost initially. So I shared those with the board, just to keep them in the loop, and if you want me to stop doing that, I'll stop doing that. So those are the two real estate items I had for you tonight. And the other thing, flip my mind here. The Raton Middle School roof has not been replaced since it was built in 1939, and it's been patched, I don't think, do we have a number of times it's been patched?
Um, I have some information out.
You don't go back that far? But it's been patched a lot, and the only way we're gonna stay in that building is we continue to patch it or replace the roof. So, real quickly, the state, PSFA, board, I can't remember what PSDOC stands for, but those people offered our district a little bit more than half, of about $900,000, to replace that roof after seeing how bad it was. And the bad, the sad thing about it was, we said yes, we would take the money, and we'd pay our share, but it would depend on whether that bond passed, and it did not pass. And so soon thereafter, the board and the superintendent rejected that money, because we couldn't pay our part, it was about $389,000 or a few. And $389,000 is a lot of money, and we didn't have, I mean, we're talking, we're taking 25% of your supplies and equipment away from you, and trying to figure out how to pay $389,000, it just wasn't there. So we rejected it, and then the discussion in September came up to consolidate. And it seemed to me at that particular point that the school board was pretty bent on doing what they thought was second best. If we can't build a school, then we'll have to consolidate. A school district that was built for 2,000 kids, five buildings, 2,000 kids, we're two and a half buildings over right now. So I thought, we can, we can save that much money, and we can pay that back over maybe two or three years. So Carl Sitchberg helped me contact the PSFA folks again, and asked if we could have that money back, and that we would pay our portion of it over a three-year period. So about a week and a half ago, they allowed me to come forward and ask them, hat in hand, if they would front our part of it, which was, like I said, about $389,000, and we would pay it back over a three-year period, because we felt we could save that much money through consolidation. And it was quite a lengthy discussion, because they're not in the business of loaning money to schools who can't pay their part of it. We were very fortunate that Jill Gilliam and Paul Aguilar, who's the chief deputy finance officer for the New Mexico Public Education Department, both went to bat for Raton. And Paul Aguilar said, you know, we will give $150,000 to Raton as part of that $389, just give it to them as an emergency supplement, if they'll pay the other two-thirds to PSFA. And so we shook hands, and that's the way it ended up. So we're very fortunate to know that we have the funds now, at least promised funds, to replace that roof that's gonna cost about $900,000. That building may be in use for a while, it's gonna be one-third of our district, so it's very important we have that roof on there. So I feel very gratified that, one, we were able to consolidate, two, that we got the EBTAC bond, thank you very much, from our board, that was an unanimous decision, and three, we got a roof for RMS. So, three for three, I feel pretty good about that for our kids. So, just to report on that. What I'd like to do now is just give you a question. I will tell you that when, when this reconfiguration was discussed, I promised the board we'd give an update every month at the board meetings, and that's what we're doing tonight. And so, just a quick review, I will tell you that we, we'd like to say that we saved that much money. We know that we haven't, because we have, if you add all this up, it becomes a $495, $495K. When you figure it out, it will only like maybe $156,000 to the good on this. So we're not gonna realize a lot of our savings until the end of the year. You know, you don't get the savings for not having as many staff, you don't get the savings for utilities, you don't get those kind of savings until the year comes to an end. So we are going to have another year, just like this year, maybe a little bit better, because lead us in the budget, put back the teacher's supply and equipment, that 25%. But when you get down to it, you guys have seen the budget, we're looking at about $156,000 to the good, and that is well below the 3% to 5% that PPD would like it to be, when we're not operating on an emergency supplemental. This is our timeline, and what I'd like to do is tell you that this, our principal, your principal, are going to brief you on the three buildings and where we're at with that, and I'll just show a few pictures before we do that. We've done quite a bit of work. When the word came back from Ms. Canadera, that we were going to, we've been approved for a three-building option, Mr. Kemp was very concerned about whether we had enough time or not to do all this, and so one of the things I told him is, I think that we can do this, we hit the road running. So we are doing this, we're starting it, most of you know this, before schools even This is some of the equipment that Mark's program has, and they showed up with five young men. Oh, by the way, we had a tree out there in the big hole in the middle of the, behind RMS, so we're glad to see that gone. That was, that was a danger to our young people.
Dr. Truhune?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Ben Mundon for looking into that situation there, had a windstorm come by or something, pretty dangerous for our staff, and I think he did a good job of taking care of the situation at the time that he did. One other question I have is, the $375,000 that we lost on the consolidation, does that take effect this year or next year, or where are we gonna get that replaced, how are we gonna get that replaced?
We're always, we're always one year behind in our finance cycle, so it will not take effect for 2015, '16, but '17, '16, '17. And that's per my.
How are we gonna make up that shortfall?
Well, like I said, we're gonna have savings at the end of this year, in utilities, savings in staff, you know, savings in, I don't even have my slide up there, but all those things that I mentioned to you previously. You know, PSFA will tell you that there's so much saving per square foot, and when you add it up to our square foot, square foot is whatever that is, after we get through with letting two buildings go, that saving. I don't know if I've got it up there. So some of this here are some of the savings that we're talking about. When I say staff, I don't mean our teachers, though I do think over time, we have to keep in mind, for example, we have, how many art teachers we have this year, four? And Ms. Rodebeck is retired, had three buildings, we need three art teachers. Same thing with some of the other programs we might have, we might be able to, if we continue to lose kids, we might be talking about having fewer PE teachers, we might be talking about having fewer elective teachers. But this particular point, none of that's gonna happen. We've actually saved money in administrator, 1.2 and 0.8, that's two full administrators. Our STE for sped teachers is gonna allow us to do a little bit less with our personnel there. Had a couple of teachers resign that we don't have to replace, and still keep well within the two student teacher ratio recommended by the New Mexico Public Education Department. Two custodians, one educational assistant, two administrative assistants, these are the savings we had now. I don't think anybody here would be surprised to know that most of our budget salary benefits, and so most of our savings are gonna come from salaries and benefits.
I think what you need to also understand, Robert, is that if we would take one school out of the equation, we still would have lost half that money. It's not something that we lose $347,000 because we're taking two out, we would have lost half that money to take out one of them. And then the other thing that needs to be considered here, and we can look at the budget later, we're gonna have a carryover of cash balance of $151,336, which is peanuts. We don't have, I mean, we have nothing in the budget right now. And lead us scratched and clawed to get this to where it is now, and I think we're doing some good things. And you know, the most important thing is, we're retaining every one of our staff members that wants a job. We're not cutting anybody that doesn't want.
About the $156,000, that is a much, but it's $156,000 more than we have this year.
Right, but that's our carryover. So if we don't run in a more efficient manner, we are going to have no carryover, and the only alternative that we have left to balance our budget would be to cut staff. That's the only thing that we have left. Or to cut supplies, staff and supply, that's what we're looking at. And so every year, our cash balance carryover has gone down. And I asked Lee to see if she could maybe give me a history on that tonight. But you talk to your constituents, I agree with you. I don't want to close two buildings, I don't want to go in this direction, and I've talked to the people at Colombian, too, and I've talked to my link. This is not an easy decision, this is not a fun decision. The fact is, Raton is declining in population, declining in kids, and it's gonna continue probably, because a week ago, Pioneer just laid off 100 people. That's a, that is a serious gut check right there. And if you don't think we're gonna feel that, you're dreaming. We are gonna feel that. And this number that we have right here is a concern, because if our numbers do drop, our SEG drops, it'll lie along with it. And guess where that's gonna go? Right to this cash balance here. We are operating on nothing. That's what we're operating on. And we can get on, you can get on your soapbox and say that we don't want to close schools. I don't want to close schools either, but the fact is, we can't open our doors here anymore, we are that close. $151,000 seems like a lot, but when you're talking about the amount of salaries and the amount of people that we employ in this district, we are not gonna open the doors at that.
Ben, you want to be first, after these pictures? Get ready? Just pull that gun out of your hip and shoot.
Sure.
Just a minute, let me just show these pictures, so, and yes, thank you, and we all have been a great deal, thanks for catching that ahead of time. I actually thought it was a tree over here, because I saw the limbs weren't coming out, and then I walked over and saw this tree, and I thought, Ben just cut down a good tree. But he didn't, we can tell that right there. And we've borne in, you know, we've gotten down into the asphalt, Mr. Little wanted to, the local architect, he helps out on quite a thing, a lot of it, timed as pro bono, but he wanted to see what was underneath the asphalt. There's about eight inches, two 4-inch overlays, I think, good old New Mexico clay underneath there. So we needed to know that to determine how we were going to approach that playground equipment we're gonna put behind the new Raton Intermediate School, and so he needed to see that, and we needed to see it, see whether we could do some of this by ourselves or need some help. So here's a teacher that's in a hurry to get out of her classroom. Anybody know whose classroom that is? I guess? Okay, I'll leave that for the bonus question. This is one of our libraries. Box in the mop, thank you, Ben, for getting those boxes for us. No, we could use one of those there. You can, you can box up a library and still have your students learn. Quite a bit of progress has been made by our librarian, boy, hats off to them. The reason this is blurry is not because the picture wasn't in focus, it's just the way they felt about all this work. These are our five young men, and boy, they are, they're bigger than me, every one of them, they're strong, and they go, they work hard, so we appreciate their help. Before we turn it over to 7:12, maybe Ben and, who else have we got here? Sharon here? Sharon, did you want to say anything tonight, after Ben or not? You caught up? Okay, we've got Ben, and then Sharon, and then, I think that'll do for now, and then we'll let Kristi and Duncan get up.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to kind of bring you guys up to date on what maintenance department's been doing, looking at consolidation and other items. Please keep in mind that some of these numbers from some of these contractors that I have gotten bids from, it's just like going looking at a Lamborghini, you know, you're sure you want to buy that Lamborghini, but it doesn't cost you anything to look, even though the price may be out of your range. Distributed 350 moving boxes, school staff has commenced packing. Additional boxes will more than likely be, have to be provided. Currently waiting for room assignments from principals as to where teachers will be located. Library books are being transferred. Dr. Truhune, Andy Ortiz, and myself went to Taos Public Schools on May 7th to view some modular buildings that are owned by MNPSFA up there. Buildings are in good shape, the maintenance supervisor says up there that they're not older than nine years old, 63 feet by 28 feet. They would be, they would be perfect for our needs, at least for what we are looking for. We spoke to a contractor at Taos that was hired by Taos Public Schools to actually move one of these modulators over. We spoke to a contractor at Taos that was hired by Taos Public Schools to actually move one of these modulars over to another school in the area. Went and spoke to him to see if he could give us some kind of a rough estimate, how much it would be to transport one of those modular buildings to Raton. I received a phone call from Mr. Paul Pacheco. He's the contractor that moved the building. He says he can bring us one of the buildings for $16,500, all the way from Taos. That's just for the transportation of the building only. Quotes would have to be provided for foundations, site plans, permits, utilities, and et cetera. Quotations from other contractors may have to be provided as per our purchasing requirements. I've kept in contact with two CES vendors regarding the small modular building here from the high school site to take over Longfellow site, all the way up to installation. Construction provided us with a quote of $47,113. That was transportation, foundation, utilities, and really, that's not too much more than that. I'm sure you're all aware, when we start hiring contractors from outside our district, they start charging us for things like per diem, food, lodging, all these different things. So, but...
Where are they from?
Albuquerque. Let's see, okay, this number that they quoted us does not include fire alarm attachment or renovation that may be required by CID to bring modular up to code or sidewalks. I also, later this afternoon, before quitting time, I was contacted by representatives from Modular Solutions. They're out of Albuquerque as well. They're the other CES vendor that I had contacted for quotes on moving buildings. They arrived today to take a look at the small portable and the Longfellow site, and will provide us with a quote as soon as possible. We are also investigating possibilities to have local contractors do the job of moving this small one and the foundation work and utilities.
What's his name again?
Mr. Christmas. I had a large cottonwood tree removed from the middle school campus west side of the building, which was growing through the asphalt area. Tree was leaning badly and fracturing at the base. The tree was found...
Let me just tell everyone, the question might come to mind that why are we adding more square footage to a district we're trying to right-size downward? And the issue at Longfellow is, there's adequate square footage for the number of students, but the way the building was designed, it's really hard to get that many students in there and still create places for ancillary services and for some of our electives, like our art program, which has a classroom all to itself. And so we may not be able to afford to put a modular back there, but we need to give it due diligence. Okay, so at the very least, we need to at least provide room for ancillary staff, and we believe that the modular behind this school could do that. We don't want to increase any square footage. That's not our intent. We do want to make sure that our, our little ones that are on that end of the district have the kind of things they need to get to our end.
Okay. So I had the tree removed. I also received quotation from Hanson and Prazano Company. Hanson and Prazano Company is the original company who installed our playground equipment. It was, it was felt that it would probably be best to contact the company who installed it in the first place, because the company we purchased it from, that's the only company they allowed to install their equipment. So we were looking to keep our warranties and things like that from the company. They gave me two quotations. One of them was to remove the Colombian Elementary School playground equipment and have it installed at the middle school site. The other one was to have the Kearney Elementary School playground equipment removed and put to the middle school site. Quotation for the relocation of the playground equipment from Colombian to the middle school was $47,108. The original cost for the jungle gym portion of that particular playground equipment only was $62,797.
Does that count the installation?
That didn't kind of, that counted the installation, but it didn't include the swing set. That was an additional cost, the swings.
We are having Mr. Christmas look and see if he can do this cheaper.
The quote they provided to remove the equipment from Kearney and reinstall it to middle school was $31,526.97. The estimate did not include weak barrier or wood chip fill, but I received a quotation from Ziger Brothers, who we usually deal with. They certify the local saw mill out here. They certify their wood chips. And so it's not as big a deal. It's a lot cheaper for us to purchase it directly than have the playground company provide it. We'll have to order these items before the playground equipment installation is complete. We're currently investigating, investigating the possibility of local contracts to move the equipment if it's allowed by our insurance company.
Do we know that answer?
Not as of yet. I've put a call into our insurance company to see if we can have some, just a regular contractor, remove it and reinstall it.
But at the last meeting, you were talking about the liability or the coverage of the actual playground equipment. If it was moved, would it still be, I don't want to say warranty, but...
Well, yeah.
You were going to talk to whoever we bought it from originally?
Right.
Do we have to use a specific person to move it, or are they going to stand behind it?
Well, that's, that's...
No matter who moves it?
Right. I also have a call into them as well.
Oh, yeah? Okay, because we talked about that at the last meeting.
Well, what we had talked about was, they recommended having us use the same company that they had install it, because they're certified to install their equipment. They would have to, we'd have to see what our insurance company says regarding the liability, not necessarily the warranty of the equipment.
You're right. Yeah, the warranty is, well, since it's gone.
Yeah, this is, this is going after best case. If we can be covered with a licensed contractor who moved it for a, for a much lower price, then we need to seriously consider that. This is a high price tag for this equipment.
Right.
So we're currently investigating the possibility of having local contractors do it, as long as the insurance company said that we'd be covered from any liability.
And now one thing, and I don't know if you've thought of this or not, regardless of which school you move it from, the other school needs to be dismantled, I would think, the playground equipment.
I did talk, I did talk to the insurance company regarding that very concerned. They didn't say we had to remove it. However, if we continue to leave it up, we are required to maintain it. And any accidents that are caused because of the lack of maintenance to it would fall upon the responsibility of the district.
As long as we own it.
As long as we own it, yes. And so that other, that other quotation for the Kearney site was actually in conjunction with the city. They were interested in probably, in possibly procuring one of our pieces of playground equipment if we did vacate two buildings. But I told Mr. Chatterley that, you know, we hadn't decided which one we would want to take at the current time. So give us opportunity to hash it over, see which one we wanted to take. But they were interested in possibly having, procuring one of our pieces of equipment, have it moved over here to the ball field. Let's see. I received three quotations from local individuals to have the asphalt areas west of the middle school gym removed and excavated to 16 inches of depth to facilitate the playground installation in these areas. Lowest quote was for $7,000 plus applicable taxes from RW Butt Company, which includes disposal of the removed debris. The two asphalt areas that are directly to the west side of the gymnasium at the middle school, they've been overlaid twice. Well, they had the initial pavement, but then they were overlaid again. And so they both have a really high crown on them. So every time it rains, because of the crown in that asphalt, it runs right underneath the gym doors and into the lobby. This was kind of trying to kill two birds with one stone. The playground company said that it would probably be cheaper for us to remove that asphalt and place the playground equipment in those two places where the asphalt is, rather than have to excavate and fill where the grassy area is. So that's why we were trying to receive quotes to see how much it would be to excavate that area. By excavating that area 16 inches, we get to the depth that's required by the playground company for wood chip fill or rubber ice fill for fall hazards. Plus, it also eliminates that high crown of asphalt that prevents the water from draining the right way and keeps it from going underneath the building. Let's see. I also received two quotations from two CES vendors for the installation of six-foot chain link fence for the grassy area on the west side of the middle school. This was a concern being that we were moving smaller children to this area and having that grassy area playing ball and things. We didn't want the children to run out into the street. One of the companies, CES companies I contacted was Facility Build. Facility Build's quotation for roughly 413 linear feet of six-foot chain link fence, 12-foot drive gate and three, four walkways was $14,481.29. That was for material and labor. Lone Mountain Contracting, another CES vendor, $23,620. These quotes were for material and labor. I decided to receive quotation for the purchase of the fencing by the district and ask for quotations for the labor from several local contractors. One quote that I received for the fencing materials alone and gates was for $4,266. And the lowest bid for the labor as of yet was $4,096.66, bringing our cost estimate for the fence to $8,363.19 if done internally. That's it.
Can I ask who you did contact on locals for the fencing?
Oh, sure. Sandball Construction, J.O. Builders, Parker Builders, and I've contacted Frank Archileta, but he hasn't returned my quote yet.
You got bids back from all three of those other ones?
Oh, I got quotations from those three, yes, sir. And so far, the only quotation that I received for the fencing was from RBS. I had, I just wanted to see what the numbers were, how big of a difference it would be. This wasn't, the quotation from them wasn't for your standard residential fence. This was for the heavier gauge, let's see, 11-gauge fabric, SS20 poles. Most of the fence poles that you buy over there for residential are a lot thinner. I didn't want to go too heavy, and I didn't want to go too thin. I was kind of trying to hit the middle of the range.
Can I just have a point of clarification?
Yes.
Are the RFB bids not closed this far, district, being of our status? You send out bids, and then they come back, and then those bids go with the lowest bid?
Well, there's, there's a little bit of misconception as far as our purchasing policy between some of the district personnel. Certain things are categorized as, are different. From $2,000 to $5,000 is considered a quotation.
Best, best, best price.
Best price, okay. It says recommend quote, okay? From $5,000, I think it was up to $10,000, recommend?
There's the one to two, which is best, the table price.
Okay, $1,000 to $2,000 was best, best available price attached quote.
Two to five.
Two to five was recommend three quotes.
Correct.
Anything that was $10,000 and...
Five to 10 was required three quotes.
Five to 10 was, yeah, required quotes. And then once you get past 10, it's a sealed bid. So it's really not a bid, what's considered a bid, unless it reaches that point. You're allowed to go out and get quotations from people until it reaches that, that point.
No, it's still bid, you have to take the lowest, right, correct?
No. You know, NMPSFA had said several years ago that if we had given out bids before, and someone came in with the lowest bid, but because of their construction performance during the carrying out of whatever job that they were hired to do, if their performance was not acceptable, we didn't have to take that lowest bid. They had given us that leeway several years back, because there was lots, lots of instances where, just because they were lowest bid, we were getting shoddy performance. And so the state says we do not have to accept a lowest bid. Just because it's the lowest bid, we can, we can go with someone if we're afraid of the performance of the contract.
As long as we have documentation.
Yeah, we'd have to have documentation.
And if we do go over $20,000, that could be a request for proposal. And then that one doesn't go by cost, that goes by evaluation.
Yes.
Ben, I'm sorry, are you on the removal of the asphalt? What was the quote on that one?
$7,000 plus applicable labor tax.
$7,000? And you only got listed one more?
No. I got three quotes. Glad I brought all these quotes tonight.
That was just the least expensive?
That was the least expensive, right. Let's see. Oh, I don't have my copy of that one. I gave that one with the PO. I had gotten... $13,000 was another quote, and $17.5 was another quote to have that removed. Anything else? Some questions?
Ben, and I give you, after the meeting, I'll give you another guy that builds fans licensed.
Sure.
And he might be able to not only do it, I can't guarantee it, for a lesser price, but also provide the material at a lesser cost. And he's a local.
Sure.
I'll give you his number.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'd appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the total amount of your lowest bids altogether accumulated?
You know, I didn't, I didn't put them accumulated all together, because I was still waiting for the quotation from Modular Solutions on the small modular. And I, I kind of, let's see. I have a total for the fencing on all that.
Last month, I gave a really rough estimate of $75 to $100 grand for the big stuff, and I think we're a little over that now, probably about $105, $106. And that's not counting the smaller things we have to do.
I'm sorry, I didn't put all that together in that format. There was too many ifs in there, and I was still kind of getting some quotations.
Yeah, we're still trying to cut prices on all of that.
Do you feel comfortable that you have a timeline that you can do this in?
My, my only problem, I don't feel that the relocation of the playground equipment or the fencing, or even as far as moving the teachers' things, is the big one to me. My biggest concern that I have is just, if we need portables in there, is getting them in, getting them set, and getting them brought all the way up to state code by the CID and by state fire marshal's office before the opening of school. But as Dr. Turhune was saying, Mr. Ortiz said that he has enough room for the children in that building. He was saying he didn't have enough room for ancillary, art department, things like that. I don't know what would have to happen to be able to facilitate the art department and the ancillary people. When I was a custodian at Colombian Elementary, I know that the music teacher taught in the gym. I know that the art department went room to room. That was just because we didn't have the space for those people to have their own room. But that's the only thing that concerns me. Once, once I'm able to get the ball rolling, or get approved to get the ball rolling for something, once we sign a contract for a particular contractor to do these things for us, it's basically out of our hands. Even if we, even if we put in the contract, if you don't finish it by said date, we'll start deducting money from you. That still may not be a big issue to them. When, when there's something that I have no control over, other than starting the ball, ball rolling and keep them after them as best I can, it's still something that's out of my control. That would be my only, that would really be my only concern, is the portables.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I want to talk to you just a few minutes about transportation. As we know, how many children we're losing day by day, and just like Mr. Kent brought up, the layoff with Pioneer. I keep hearing rumblings that some of the kids are going to be homeschooled, some are going to try to go to school in Maxwell Spring or different areas, even Simroon. I've heard they've tried to get into Trinidad, but Trinidad's refusing to take some of them because they're across the state line. But where, where we're looking at is trying to save money also. I'm losing five drivers this year. Okay, I've got Doug and Cindy Smith sold their home. They're moving to Lubbock, Texas. I've got Patricia Cruz, who her husband got on down in Artesia this past year, so I'm going to lose Patricia. I've lost Ernie Johnson already, and Ted Candelario is probably going to leave us also. Well, we are training a few drivers right now. I've got two drivers training right now and one more looking, coming up. I'm not sure, I've got a couple of subs, but I don't know if they're going to sign up for actual routes or what they're going to want to stay in as substitutes. We have to look at that. I've talked to Ms. Sanchez here, and I told her, we're going to cut another route this year. Okay, we're not going to lose mileage. We'll still have the same students, hopefully. But what I'm going to do is, I'm going to take Route Number 7, that has run out in New York Canyon subdivision and up behind the ARM. and up behind the A R F, and I'm going to consolidate half of that onto Route Thirty Three, and the other half will go onto a Bus Nine. And she, Bus Thirty-Three goes out, used to go out to the McCullough Ranch. And since we lost that, he just actually operates just here in town behind the Swaydees, comes down around the car there in that area. So, I'm going to send him on out to New York Canyon, pick up those children out there. And our routes, like I said, they've been so small anyhow. When I first started working, which of course that was in seventy-four, when I first started working, Spokes was the, was your vendor then, he, customer, well, I guess you'd call your contractor at that time. And as a contractor then, we had thirteen routes. In the last two years, I've lost two routes. Simroon had, operates seven routes, okay? We're going to be down to seven routes next year. But, we should not lose, we're going to lose very little mileage if we consolidate both schools. I've got five buses that won't go into the Colombian area, but I still will have three buses over there. I'll have Bus Thirty come out of Yankee to pick up the students in that area that need to be transported either to the middle school or to Longfellow. We've got Bus Thirty-four that comes down through that area right now, comes down North First Street, and they pick up most of the mid-school, high school right now. That bus right now at this time is pretty well filled. So, we're going to send another bus over in that area, which, right now, when she comes in out of Yankee, the first school she goes to is Colombian. So, I'm going to move her up a couple of streets up into La Cueva, Tramparas, up in that area to pick up and come back down North Third Street, no, North Second Street, I'm sorry. That way, if there's any small children in that area, we're going to keep them away from that school building where there's, there's, it's going to be empty and I really don't want to have anybody around there if I can help it. As for Kearney School, we're going to try to consolidate them and have them go to the middle school. And as Ben said, we're going to put up the three gates, and that way, when the buses come in and out, just like they do at Longfellow, they're going to have their specific gates to go to, to their individual buses and load and unload there. They should still, most of them in that area should still be within their walking distance because Kearney is what, maybe two blocks away from the middle school. So, I don't think we're going to have any problem there as far as having the kids walking to an area school, their neighborhood school. What else was I going to talk to you about? I, for one, I, I think the consolidation is good, but I think that, I'm not happy with the way that the little children are set up. I kind of like Longfellow to have from K through fourth grade and then mid-school, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then the others on up to the high school, if that would be possible and feasible. These little children, I have them every day. I've been driving since February almost every day myself, and I see all these little children on these buses, and they get along. All the kids seem to get along pretty well. But, the thing is, we have the little ones in the front, the older ones in the middle, and the oldest in the back. And still, we've got the little children, they're going to sneak back there and they want to sit with those little kids, with the older kids, you know? And it's kind of, it's interesting because pretty soon they're coming up here saying, well, so-and-so pinched me, or so-and-so took my books, or so-and-so took my pencil. So, I don't know how it'll work. I hope it works very well for all of us, but I don't know how it's going to work with having those smaller children at the middle school. I don't know if they're going to be on bottom, who's going to be on top, all of this, or if they're all going to consolidate and go in different areas. That, you know, I, it's not my problem. Other, my problem's just getting them there. But, I see them, how some of them struggle getting up and down the stairs of the school bus. So, to me, this is an issue, getting a lot of them in that middle school with all these stairs. And I would just like for you to think about that and see if there's another way. And like I say, it's, I watch them try to struggle up and down those stairs every day. So, if we could, maybe there, if there's a possible way to maybe keep them at a lower level at Longfellow, I would like to see if that could possibly be done. Any questions? Robert?
Ms. Ortiz, a couple of Saturdays ago, you had a school bus inspection of all the school buses. How did that come out?
Fine, everything passed. Everything usually does. Warren's been very good. I'm glad you brought that up. He's been very good. We've had him for about six years, and for every inspection, everything has passed. The other thing that I'd like to bring up, and I don't know if this is possible, and I like what Dr. Terhune said about having the kids learn about changing oil, things like that. I don't know, maybe Lena's looked into it, I'm not sure, about the OSHA rules and regulations of having younger students work on something like that. If there's anything, you know, you might want to check into that. The other thing is, I don't know about spending the money on, you said the money, there's no money going to be spent. The building's just going to be given to you. I think that is very generous. But, I also think paying the interns on that property or whatever you have to do, we already are set up for that. We're set up for that with Durham. And I don't know, since we're going in school, if it would be feasible to have some of the cars brought down there and let some of the students work on them there instead of going into another building that you have to pay taxes on, insurance on, that sort of thing. I don't know if that would save some money or if it wouldn't. It's something we might want to look at. I wouldn't want them working on school buses. If in case they did break some part, the parts on buses are much more expensive than parts on cars. So, that I would rather them, you know, if they want to work on the cars and stuff, I think that would be a good experience. But as far as the buses are concerned, I think we'd better leave that up to somebody that has a little bit more experience with it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Expecting to speak tonight, but I want to assure you that the technology that does have to be moved, for example, the routers and switches that the schools that are closing will have to be reformatted and reconfigured and brought to the schools that will be used. The telephones will do the same thing. Those teachers that are just moving from a classroom to another classroom is not going to be a problem. They just take their computers and phones right with them. But, any phones, which there are a few, that will go from one building to another building have to be reconfigured completely because of the I P addresses, of course, and the numbers on them, phone numbers and et cetera, and, and the voicemail. And the wireless A Ps that are, those are called access points, that are up in the ceilings of all the schools. I will have to remove those from the schools that are being closed and reconfigure those, which, those A Ps back into the other schools, which I do now have enough licenses for. I checked it out and made sure I did have enough licenses. And as far as all the computers, I'm hoping that the teachers, since they have their own personal data on those computers, that they will actually just move their own computer to wherever they go, whether it's within the same building or if it's to another building. That would help me a lot, and then I wouldn't have to worry about reconfiguring anything there. And it would help them also because they have their own personal data on them and they should keep their own computers. So, other than that, I assure you, I'll get the job done. That's what you pay me for. So, it'll be done by the time school starts.
Laurie, I appreciate all the work that you do for the school system with the new modular going in at Longfellow. Is that going to, do you have that?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That is going to be a small problem because that, that portable will have to be wired with Cat Six wire. And even though I know how to do it and I've done it many times, I can't do that until, which, I'm not certified to do so. But, that's not really a big problem because I'm not even sure how many classrooms there will be in there. But I have to put at least two Cat Six jacks in every one of the rooms. So, that will have to be bid up, but that's not really going to be a major Any other questions?
What you're looking at right now is our third floor, which is freshman and family right now. What we have located upstairs is our seventh and eighth grade special classroom. Pretty much all of our seventh grade classrooms, math, science, D L A, and social studies, and a health classroom.
And some of those classes will actually, those teachers will be split with eighth grade. So, some eighth graders will be coming upstairs. Our thoughts on that are is that those things would normally have been housed together in the municipal configuration. So, it would be appropriate to do that here.
Any questions on that so far?
Language arts, it's down with you?
Um, D L A.
D L A, okay.
Why would you ask?
This is a little bit smaller to see. We have our math teachers, science teacher, shop room. These are our math, our science are across from each other with the lab, our shop, the media center. We have social studies. We try to keep eighth grade right here in this
corner with social studies, E L A, and science and math, so they can be socially located. We have our band room. Mr. Mottis and Jaffe King, we have a computer lab that, we have our nine through twelve social studies and English. Mr. Milano, Spanish, business, and then our facts office. This is our health clinic.
The office lounge and conference room is yet to be determined.
Right.
Business meeting.
Uh, Dan and Medel's courses.
So, where is, I'm just kind of curious, where, this is Lemon's office. Is it still there?
Yeah, she's the little.
She's right there.
In the middle, okay. I see. Because that goes behind us.
Actually, she's, she's that one.
Oh, she's right there?
Yeah, because that, Anna has them locked in.
Oh. Okay. Any questions on that?
Ms. Gina, what's that building way on the other side by the, out of the band room over there?
Uh, that's the Voag. Mr. Honeyfield Space.
It's what?
Mr. Honeyfield Space.
Okay.
Welding shop.
It's not shop?
This is, is the band room and the middle half is the.
Yeah, right.
So, that's the old auto mechanics room? So, they can't be zipped auto mechanics in?
Yeah, listen.
It's available. It's, we buy a building and all that business. I, I mean, we have all this space. I don't know why we need more buildings, more insurance, more whatever, but I think it's time for me.
So, you're saying that there, those eighth graders are going to have a lot of interacting with the rest of the higher kids, I mean, the older kids?
Currently, right now, we're looking at a schedule to where they would not be in passing periods with the older kids. The older kids would pass first and then eighth graders.
Seventh and eighth grade would share a common bell schedule or schedule. So, they would be passing when the halls are vacated by nine through twelve.
That's going to be interesting.
We do it now. With our seventh grader, our ninth grader, sorry.
You're doing that now?
With the ninth grade, yes.
Yeah, the ninth grade, but we're talking about eighth graders coming up here.
Seventh.
Seventh grade. And these kids, when they get up here.
We've been assigned with the task.
Their little brains get bigger because they're at the high school. That's not wrong.
We've been assigned with the task, and we will do our best, absolutely do the best that we can.
No, we're really against bringing the ninth graders up here at that time. We worked for it, and now bringing these young children. And I have, I have total three kids, and my youngest one is coming up next year. And I don't want them interacting with all these older kids. It's wrong.
And with our bell schedules, the way we have planned, they shouldn't be interacting with upperclassmen at all.
Yeah, but how about their electives, electives in that?
Electives outside of.
Yeah.
And then you have a wing, something with.
We've been working on that. We've been assigned a task to come up with something together, seven, twelve. And as a district, we're all trying to come up with something. This right now has been put a priority to make sure kids and teachers know where they're going to be before the summer rolls around.
Where are your offices, Ken, do you have?
Mr. Ware is going to be where he is, and we're still trying to determine where my office will be, possibly maybe on the seventh floor with the seventh graders.
So, does that mean there's in budget, we are going to have a security guard due to our young ones interacting with the older ones?
The young ones.
Right now, when I see the school here, I do not see, all I see here is teachers in the hallways, where these schools belong. I don't see a principal walking constantly, checking those hallways, checking the rooms, making sure. Or is there going to be both of you in the hallway every time that bell rings or any bell rings?
You know, the last three times you've been in my building, I met you in the hallway.
No, but sitting down, watching, talking to the, to Tonya and to Ms. Cindy. Yes, I am right.
That's fine.
But, the thing is, my concern is younger kids. Are you, as principals, going to be in those hallways as soon as either bell rings, whatever bell you guys have? Are yous going to be in there?
Laurie, we're going to try our very best. I mean, I have kids coming up too. So, it's not.
Well, it's not trying to bet, are you going to do it?
We, we go.
This seven, twelve model is in, all across the state, all across the country. This is not something that we're reinventing. This is something that actually has been proven to. What's that, I'm sorry?
We're talking about rat tone. Rat tone's never gone through big changes like this. Every one of you born men has to know that. It's wrong.
Well, I hate to, this is, I respect everything you're saying, but the discussion was already done, and you probably should have voiced your opinion several months ago. So, I mean, it's kind of an old.
Now, you're giving my opinion, my look.
Well, I know, but I think they will do their best.
Well, I'm not saying.
And this is not the time or the place to.
Yes, and I think they will do.
Let's go ahead and move on here.
Yeah, let's do it.
We have next slide, I think.
Take the bottom floor right now.
Good question.
Oh, sorry.
I already asked you, Mr. Ware, but I just wanted to make sure, look like this management, since there are all those computers now, I know we're going to make it, we're going to make another computer lab, or we're trying to make another computer lab, right?
No, we're not making another computer lab. The majority of those computers coming out of that lab will go into the business lab for Ms. Medina to use for her classes. I project that there will be some extras that you wanted for hearing centers.
Okay.
As well as we, we have sixty laptop computers that are new to us that we can also check out, sign to the classrooms for that type of thing.
Thank you.
And they're going to have a card. Yeah, we'd like to get that technology upstairs to the seventh graders as well, so they can utilize. They'll be staying up there.
Okay, so I'll have, I'll have some type of access, like a language lab or something like that with all the.
Give me password, computers in there?
The third floor right now will consist of Ms. Lynette's office and special ed. We have, we'll have a couple classrooms downstairs. It'll also house our ancillary staff, speech, O T P T. It'll also provide a confidential area where we can continue to have SAT meetings, I E P meetings, any other, C Y F D comes in, they need to meet with the kids, they'll be able to meet with them confidentially down there, and our wellness center will remain intact.
When you say the third floor, you're talking about the.
I'm sorry, yeah, the bottom, bottom.
That's my question. I guess in the, the drawings that we received or whatever, you're, you're going to use two rooms down there for classrooms?
They're currently used as classrooms now.
Say what?
They're currently used as classrooms, special ed, pull-out resource.
I'm not talking about special ed, I'm talking about regular classroom.
We won't have any regular classrooms down.
No, because we were able to reconfigure that and keep those classes on the, on the second floor as well as the third floor.
Is that what you were meaning?
Well, yeah, if we need, because it just seems like, and I, I know times have changed with the amount of room you have to have for, for the special ed, but it just seems like we got a whole floor committed to that. And I thought they were supposed to be worked back into the general population, and it doesn't seem like we're doing that.
They are. There's a minimal number of classes down there, but when appropriate, and asked, and divided four in the I E P, there are class rooms available for those students to be pulled out to.
We still do have quite a bit of number of, between seven, twelve now, severe students that have one-on-one aid, so we want to still be able to provide them with an area that they can go to if, for whatever reason, we have one that's. We still do have quite a bit of number of, between seven, twelve now, severe students that have one-on-one aid, so we want to still be able to provide them with an area that they can go to if, for whatever reason, we have one that's. We, we don't have one still in diapers, do we?
Um, yes, we do.
So we still want to be able to afford them a place where they can go and have some privacy and do one-on-one therapy and work with the kids as well.
And I know you're trying to get this figured out for the kids and for the teachers prior to next week. What about scheduling? I, I guess I'm leaning into that. Has, has there been anything done for scheduling for next year?
We've taken course requests and.
But I mean, do the kids have any idea? Have they seen their return?
No.
They have started filling out registration forms. Lynette's worked really hard to put them together and so we have gotten those out to the kids and they are in the process right now of filling them out with their parents and returning them. We started off with getting teachers together to determine what is required that needs to be offered. And then other courses that we would like to offer. And so we're able to do that. We're working on that now. There are a few classes we're kind of trying to re-figure out as teachers now are resigning or leaving and so we're trying to figure out how to fill in the holes and the gaps. But that's, most teachers right now know where they're going to be, what grades they're teaching, and ninety percent sure what, what they're going to teach for next year.
Okay. Is physics and chemistry in the mix?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Now. Somebody hit me from behind because it's. What did we do with the athletic hour? Or what did you guys do with the athletic hour?
Right now, we're scheduling without the athletic hour, just to see what it does scheduling-wise.
It's going to be very difficult to get it into the schedule now that we have as many kids and teachers as we do and the classes that need to be offered. So we've kind of scheduled without it. I don't know, I guess I was under the assumption you all still needed to make the final. Yes or no, or.
You guys are making it supposed to be.
I thought we left it up to you guys to make that decision.
We're currently doing it without it in the schedule. Because one of the things that happens to the dynamics within scheduling is that you have seventh grade PE is required. So we know that's a minimum of four courses as well as the PE that's required in the high school. So even with two teachers or a teacher and a half, that creates if we don't have a full seven-period schedule to begin looking at those types of things.
And that's also keeping in mind, trying to keep them separate and out of the classrooms whenever seventh grade needs to have the gym and vice versa. And so it wouldn't allow for any other people occupants to be using the gym during seventh period. It would cut into our normal PE classes.
Okay. And back to Ted's question with the physics and the chemistry. There would be a lab?
We have two applicants and right now, we're projecting with a number of students that would be in that. We have that science lab classroom that I've seen before in other schools where lab settings like that were used very effectively as both a, a regular classroom instructional as, as well as a lab.
And that, I just think we need to offer some labs in those classes because you know they're going to have them when they go on from here. And if they don't have any idea, then they're lost when they get to the next level as far as going into a lab and having some idea what to do.
We're working really hard to try to get that going as well as our math. The teachers are very flexible. They've been collaborating in PLCs, trying to figure out, you know, scenario one, scenario two, three, just in case as people are leaving. We're trying to figure out the best way to serve the kids and teachers are willing to kind of step up, miss on miss with, they're willing to take any classes and help pitch in wherever needed. So I think by then, by the beginning of school, we'll have it figured out, but that's going to take us a little bit longer.
We had only two applicants for the physics, chemistry position.
Christian, might I make a comment?
Go ahead.
The middle school library got moved up here today. Mrs. Craig's room is sitting upstairs now in the old roller room. And this cushion stuff is sitting on the other corner. So the Craig folks do their thing.
Those are things we actually have in motion. Registrations, as I said, are well on their way. We've done school tours with the kids. We've brought them up. We've showed them around. We've also, would like to have something for parents to be able to come and tour at some point. We're running out of time right now, so that may have to actually be towards the beginning of the school year. Summer school arrangements, we're trying to figure those out now, get letters out to kids. We're actually wanting to have six, seven, and eight summer school up here this summer so they get familiar with the building. So those are some of the things that we're already have been working on. There's still a lot more and so. You know. We don't have a lot of time left. So I guess what I want to say is, you know, we're here till June fifth. But as everybody else, I mean, we want our vacation too. So we're, we're putting in overtime, weekends, time off with our families just to get this stuff done and try to make everybody happy. So just know, you know, we're, we're on overdrive here and we're trying the best we can, so.
And if you need me, holler. If you guys need anything, I am available. I can help any way I can. I'll be happy to help you any way, shape, or form, whatever. Just be aware of it, you know. And I've offered to use my vehicle to help people move from one school to the other. I don't mind helping at all. Because I know we're on a time crunch and so I'm happy to help.
I saw three librarians working in, uh, cutting today. Everybody pictured in helping parents.
Sure, yeah. They're busy too, so have kids and.
That next slide you didn't prepare an acumen for, I think, but yeah. It's there if you want it.
I don't know whose that is.
That's ours.
The Thor High School now.
Oh, I think, maybe you all have it better configured on your paper. It just gives you a list of.
Who's assigned where?
Who's assigned where currently. And as we know of empt, of vacancies, we just have new hire there. So it doesn't look very nice on here, but it might show up better on yours.
So has some people been hired or what's the deal? Does I see some new names here?
Uh, no, we haven't hired anybody. The position on the science position is our first one that just closed and so.
Well, in physical education, health.
That's, that's Erin Gans and she's currently, we hired her in place of Chris Kynsmith when Chris left in December, so she's been at the middle school. She'll come up with us.
Okay. She had her degree in health. That's good.
Or is, I could ask her, I guess. Are you coming up here?
Uh-huh. I'll be up here for three classes, four classes. I'll be at the intermediate school in the morning with Ben and the sixth graders. And then I keep.
Still running the same basic program? I mean.
Well, I kind of am going to change to a new program.
Well, what, I mean, you're doing your thing?
Right.
Okay, okay.
She's going to look very similar on the bottom end with the sixth grade, fifth, sixth grade. It's going to kind of take it, because what we don't want to do is have those kids come here and they repeat what they did at the intermediate school. So she's looking at a program called the STAR program, which is an overall view of hospitality operations, front of the house, back of the house, all of those things. So hoping that will lead into further discussion and course development as students progress through.
We're trying to look at that currently right now in all of our just core courses and electives, just how to better, trying to build them so that there's better classes offered seven, twelve.
I understand that, but I know there was some concern when all this first came to being, how, how that was going to work and that's why I was asking and.
Right. And that's when we made the change to do the comprehensive program at the middle school so you don't have to do those machines up here. That was the issue. And that's why we're going to try to do the hospitality class, which will lead into hospitality and tourism that will complement the culinary arts.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Good evening, everyone. I have here just some information about the, the building and the staffing plan. And that's not the right button.
I lost it now, sorry.
There we go. Thank you. So our first floor, you'll see, we have, there we go, this is our main entrance. And we have our third grade pod over here. On the south end of the building, the support services for third grade here on that same end. Also downstairs, we have, oh, this is the old one. This should be our social worker here. And we have Ms. Ortiz's stats room. That will be a class available for fifth and sixth graders. We have art. We'll have, we should have art available all day. And this is not the right, this is not the right one. This is going to. This is another title room and ELL service. And then another special education room and our computer lab. The computer lab is divided. Can everyone hear me well enough? My room is kind of sore. You can't hear me, Virginia? I'm sorry. I'll try to speak this way. Is that better? Okay, we'll see. So that's our, that's our downstairs with our third grade primarily and then some of our specials, electives. And this is upstairs, our third floor. We had debated back and forth, well, let me go through this first. On, on this end, where's my pointer? There it is. On this end of the building, so right below is the third grade here on this end, fourth grade. With some support services for special education and ancillary here, not social work. Fifth grade split, two of the rooms for fifth grade on this end of the library, two of the rooms for fifth grade on this end. And then our sixth grade is housed down here on this end of the, the north end of the building upstairs. Our science lab, we had debated back and forth for a little while about having that be, continue to be an open room for use by any grade level. But after further discussion, that will be a science lab that will be used for classroom space and lab space for our sixth graders. So that will be, that's, that's going to be very nice. And a nice lead in to the, the expectations for courses and lab work up here at the, at the high school building.
Which kids are going to be allowed to change to have electives? Sixth grade only or?
Our electives and specials, at, in an elementary model, we're looking at, not, they're not electives, they're specials. Every child gets library, art, PE, music. And we're really looking at trying to figure out how to make sure that our sixth grade students have some additional options like the family and consumer science. And for sixth grade, the wood shop. But still maintain a model where classes are assigned and keep it simple in that students, sixth grade students may not have a choice of electives, that we may develop a system where they have opportunity to experience all of the different available electives in sixth grade. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I don't know how, how that's going to work.
We're still working on figuring that out.
If you put a kid in art and he like just stand. Or you put a girl in wood shop. But now are you developing the schedules? Because you're no longer going to have a, a counselor doing that there, correct? Like she is up here.
No, I do not have a counselor building a schedule for me. I've been working with the staff on that.
Okay, because I just saw up there it said counselor office and then Phillips and I wasn't sure what that.
We have an elementary counselor, Tanille Phillips. She services our K through fifth grade at this time and next year will service our kindergarten through sixth grade. She is our counselor.
But she's not going to be doing any of the scheduling?
No.
Okay, I see.
Tina Dorance, our attendance officer and middle school athletics director. Has taken up some of the reins since Mr. Ward has been gone in helping with setting schedules for new kids who have come in and so on. And so I expect that she'll be able to be a support there. For the most part, I'll be myself, working with the staff to come up with our schedule.
I have a question.
Sure.
How many kids are you projecting next year? And how many classrooms do you have this year? Because I see like four for fifth grade and only three for fourth grade, right?
We're looking at for this coming year, based on current enrollment, about two hundred and forty students. Our third grade class and our fourth grade class coming up are smallest. Those have sixty-two to sixty-five, I believe, enrolled at this time. So we're looking at three classrooms for those.
For fourth grade?
For fourth grade as well as for third grade. Our third grade downstairs, excuse me, did show three classrooms for third grade as well.
So how, how much, how many square feet are in each classroom in those classrooms that you're showing right there?
I don't know. I have not measured them, but I can definitely get that.
About five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty square feet. We'd like to have seven hundred if we had a new school.
So how many kids can we legally place in each classroom? That's what I want to know.
I don't think it's by classroom. I think it's by building.
I thought it was by square footage per classroom.
Okay, I'll check it out for you. I, I will tell you that I think they've had as many as twenty-five in the past.
So these classrooms, we're looking at potentially twenty-one.
You said twenty-one?
Mm-hmm. For third grade and fourth grade. Fifth grade and sixth grade classes, those class sizes are larger in the eighties. And so with four classrooms each for fifth grade and sixth grade, those are also close to twenty.
And fifth and sixth, where's your other sixth grade? I'm only seeing.
It's that purple one. You, this is, this is one version back, so this is a sixth grade classroom.
And how many do you say per classroom? I'm sorry.
Um, right around twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty, okay. What about sixth grade?
The same.
Twenty?
Twenty, 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 twenty-one is how it looks right now. So when we.
So what's the, what's the plan if there's more?
If there are more, then our teachers will have slightly larger class sizes. We have Dr. Terrapion's plan for twenty-eight elementary teachers across the grades. We have an extra teacher. That would be four per grade. We have four per grade in second grade, four per grade in sixth grade, four per grade in fifth grade. Kindergarten and first grade both need a fifth person. A fifth person, I'm sorry. And so that fifth person is where I get, I get three out of the mix.
She's given out one of her four to kindergarten and first grade because of the number. And will continue to move them around after population averages flowed in each grade.
Well, and when you think, are you guys going to use like, I mean, I think you're worried about space, but number one, if you're using desks, the desks are smaller than the ones more like for the third base than they are typically right now, right? They're a little bit small. And I know a lot of them use tables. And I mean, like there's what, five or six kids on a table now? I mean, is that what they're going to probably do?
I believe many of the third and fourth grade use. I believe many of the third and fourth use desks, not tables.
So they're a little bit, I mean, maybe a little smaller, but I don't know.
I don't know if the surface tops are that much smaller. They're shorter. But I don't know that they're that much smaller.
Well, yeah, I guess not. I don't know. But that, that might be, you know, that might be.
That might save you square inches.
Space, yeah.
Maybe.
I might need to reject a little bit on that particular item, if you want.
Sure.
The state fire marshal has said that each student requires twenty square foot net per student in a classroom. The square footages are determined by classroom size, not building size.
Correct.
And they're, they're determined by educational rooms. Take square footage of a, of a particular room with nothing in it. You take that gross square footage and you deduct square footage just for every desk, for every bookcase, for every cabinet, everything in the room. You subtract that from your gross. You subtract that from your gross square footage, that gives you net square footage. Then you, you divide that by twenty, cause that's what each student is required to have. And that's how many children the, the state fire marshal says that you can legally put in a room.
And as long as they can have access to get out of the room. Cause I, I recall very vividly one year they came in to my room and I hadn't lined up. And it's, well, you know, as long as they were able to escape, in case, you know, those things to get out for...
Yeah.
So it does determine how much the teachers are bringing into the classroom?
My, my point exactly, that's why I want to stop moving. I don't want all the teachers just because, hey, we're vacating Kearney, but I got thirty bookcases in here. I'm taking those, there's Longfellow when they are, I'm taking those to mid-school when they are.
But in turn, we don't want the children to be without what they need, you know what I mean? So I think, I don't know how they're gonna come up with that prior to that.
But that's what the formula is for determining how many children are, are allowed by state fire marshal.
Considering kindergarten child and pesticide, you and I, because these kids, as big as our, we are in school. So for them not to make a distinction between grade is still filling.
Mr. Mundon, has a copy of this plan been sent to the fire marshal or has he been involved in any of that?
I have, I have sent a letter to the state fire marshal's office, um, to the state fire marshal himself, um, asking him about certain concerns. And I also had asked him if you have any recommendations or any, any things that we need to be looking at, please let him know. He hasn't contacted me that way.
Could you recheck with him? I mean, we're running short on time. I'd hate to start school and they come in and say, hey, we wanna have the square footage.
Yes, sir.
If there was an issue, then wouldn't you have something to tell us?
Well, you would've thought so and that's why I wasn't too concerned. Um, I was just kinda going by gross square footages of the middle school of the, uh, the classrooms. Um, and I think, did I, did I, did I hear right that you were looking at a student population around three fifteen?
No.
Two hundred and forty.
Oh, okay. Um, just by, just by the classroom sizes, it seemed like it was gonna squeak in there, okay. But like you said, once again, determine on how many rolling bookcases and shelves and aquariums and all the different things that you should want to take.
You're talking about permits, if they rolled in a cow, computer on wheel, they roll back out again, that's not a cow. It shouldn't.
Any other questions here? Next, I just have a list of some of the activities and some of the planning pieces that have, um, either already taken place or in process at this time. Um, we have our staff grade and course assignments. I made it a point to go around and speak to each teacher, um, some of the paraprofessionals, um, about what their preferences were because we knew we were going to need to have some people move a grade level. Um, and so I, I went and spoke to each person personally about what their preferences were, um, to make those decisions. Um, I've been in contact with the public education department. Our sixth grade used to be part of our middle school, but now they are part of a, an elementary building and we have questions regarding, um, the end of course exams. Uh, do requirements change for them? And also would there be any implications for the educator effectiveness systems that New Mexico teach as a result of that switching from an elementary, from a middle school model to an elementary model for our sixth grade teachers? Um, we've come up with a building use plan, um, a slightly older version of which you saw just a moment ago. Um, we can make sure you get an updated one. Um, the staff have had an opportunity to come to the building and check out the rooms and, um, see the different spaces and give input and feedback on, on that allocation of space. Um, our fourth and fifth grade students from Kearney have been to the middle school to tour the building. Um, the, um, there were seventh and eighth grade student, was it student council students?
FCC LA.
FCC LA students who gave tours, um, of the building for the fourth and fifth grade buildings. And that was very, uh, very positive and students had lots of questions that they asked of the older students and they had lots of questions for me and, um, I, it was a good experience. Our second and third grade have not yet, uh, visited, but we hope to get that done here shortly. Um, I've also, I put out to teachers to get some student input. Um, students have lots of questions and they also have ideas. Um, we've had teachers talk to their students about, uh, a mascot. Uh, the kinds of things that kids would be interested in talking about. Um, Longfellow has their baby tiger cub and a high school has their roaring tiger and, you know, what might our mascot look like, things like that. Um, as you heard Mr. Mundon say, we are getting information now about playground and fencing and alleviating the flooding problem. Um, I've already contacted the vendor and set dates for our fall and spring school pictures. I've had contact from, um, organizations that set up field trips and special events, specifically our NBI and, um, what's the other one? Sandia Mountain Natural History Center that sets up a, um, a special field trip out to Sugar Reed for the fifth graders. I've been in contact with those people. Um, teachers are in the process of compiling info, uh, student data, um, for an end of year report to help set up classroom, uh, student classroom assignments, so, um, how the, how students will be grouped in classrooms next year. Uh, we've made arrangements for summer school. Um, we've, I've spoken with, um, principals about, uh, security for student QM folders that are going to be, needed to be moved out of Colombian and Kearney. And, um, if there are any personnel files, we've made arrangements for how to keep those secure and in the right place. Um, we've set, uh, an afternoon bus pickup schedule with Sharon from the bus barn. Um, I've had quite a few different conversations, um, with Melissa Medina concerning our elementary fine arts grant and, um, the impact that our consolidation has on that program as far as how the program looks for student instruction as well as how the funding looks. Um, I've been working with staff on developing our schedule and that's still in progress. That's a big, a big deal and, uh, still working on that. And I've been in collaboration with Mr. Ortiz and Mrs. Medina on specials and elective schedule. We do share, I share, um, two staff members with Longfellow and two staff members with, um, the high school. And so to get everybody coordinated and where they need to be, um, we're working on figuring that out. Um, and lastly, I've had three PLC sessions with, uh, a variety of the staff who will be coming to the intermediate, intermediate school next year. Um, and in those, we've done some, everybody getting to know each other. This is a new configuration of teachers in a, for many of them in a new space and, um, a new configuration of student, uh, grades. And so, uh, we've had some opportunities to work together on some of these tasks in PLC time and I appreciate that. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
I apologize, my stuff that went over to Dr. Terhune's didn't get onto his PowerPoint. So they do, uh, the board has a copy and I'll go through this real quick and let you know. Um, if you notice, uh, on the south end, I've got my first grade groups. Uh, Ms. Austin, Ms. Valerio, Ms. Hightree, Ms. Rubio and Ms. Middlebrook on that side. I do also have Ms. Chavis and Ms. Henson in Title One classroom right there. My pre-K, Ms. Hall is right around with the first grade in that area. My sped class, Mrs. Gomez and Mrs. Unger's pre-K. Um, I've moved over second grade to the north end of the building. There will be four, four, uh, second grade teachers, Mr. Hopper, Ms. Sintas, uh, Ms. Boone and Ms. Shields. And then in the outer building, we're gonna move our kindergarten all out there, keep them together. Uh, and if you noticed, we have four rooms in that big portable. And then also I use a, a small, uh, it's not a smaller portable, I guess. It's, it's a pretty good sized portable for music right now. So we're gonna go ahead and put Mr. Chavis right in that classroom there. Um, depending on, on ancillary, I put that on the west side. That would be, uh, portable if we happen to get that. Are there any questions over any of that at this point?
What's the open space in the corner here, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what?
Top right corner with the open space?
Top right, well, that's, that was from, from Mr. Mundon sending a plan of, of what we were wanting to do to get two portables for music and art. Uh, that's just a, a portable that's not there.
Oh.
Sorry about that, I should've marked that out.
That was a proposal.
It was a proposal and, and right now I just left it blank because we're not sure about it.
Two of the modules we're looking at had two classrooms. Uh, one was the alternate school modular, the other was one at town. The only one we have left are those two, the one behind the high school, which had one classroom, too bad.
We shall see.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Sanchez, uh, today talked to me for a little bit and he's, doesn't know if he'll be in this official capacity as state inspector or not, but he's willing to help, uh, with presumed then, if we have any problems or something. I'd like to thank you for throwing your support because I know some of these permits are kinda hard to obtain and you have the knowledge and stuff and, uh, I hope you can help us out and get that portable up there.
So the many people that are here, I'm potentially my last names with the CID, the county inspector and I get, I mentioned that these all is that I will volunteer. But, um, there's lots of options moving forward and most definitely we can do whatever needs to be done.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions or any, anything that you would like to know?
That's your second floor.
Okay. Uh, the activity status, as you noticed, with Longfellow, our move isn't as, as big as mid and then the high or intermediate. I'm sorry, gotta get used to that. Um, second grade staff has come over to Longfellow and looked at the rooms that I've assigned them. Kinda showed them the building, most of them knew what the building was like anyway. Most of them had kids in our schools. So we, we brought them over. I met with, with that staff, answered any questions that they had, any concerns that were still lingering. You know, we're still talking about specials, we're talking about different things like that. So I was able to answer a lot of questions for them and I've left that door open. I told them anytime they feel like they can think of anything else that they need to come and talk to me about, they're more than welcome to come and talk to me. We'll be able to sit down as a team and see what the best scenario is for, for second grade, for kindergarten, for first grade at Longfellow. Um, also we, today we started with our music, art, PE, uh, packing equipment, uh, getting all that stuff going from mid, I mean, from, yeah, from intermediate or mid, as you call it now, to high school and then bringing Kearney, Columbia, uh, PE equipment and musics and art stuff over to the different schools that they're gonna need. I also, I do got a, uh, Dr. Terhune did mention, uh, our librarian has been working really hard, Kelly Gabrali. She's actually gone over to the other schools to help kind of each, they're, they're helping each other, but she's really worked hard to get her library kind of coordinated and start deleting books that she needs to delete. And she's helping, uh, Ms. Ortiz and also, uh, Colombian to get all that library moved. That's a lot of books to move, but they're really moving pretty good on that. So I'd like to give Ms. Gabrali some, some, at least a thumbs up on that because she's done a wonderful job of helping. That's what's going on at Longfellow. If, uh, you have any questions, I'd be more happy answering them.
I'm gonna probably ask you the same question I asked earlier, um, what about square footage wise? Do you have any concerns?
I've never had any concerns right now, you know, if we're, second grade's probably gonna be my most populated group cause that first, uh, there's only four classes. So they'll probably end up having about twenty-two, twenty-three per class. But if, if you really think about it, my kindergarten right now, I think even Mrs. Arminho's classroom has probably about twenty-three kids in that class right now. So I don't think it'll be a big problem for us square footage wise. Most of our rooms and then the rooms in the kindergarten area are really big. So we're fortunate at Longfellow that we do have bigger rooms. So I don't think that would be such a concern. Now...
I'm a little concerned, I have to tell you, uh...
I, I, well...
Even at the kindergarten, even at the kindergarten level, I believe the total amount of students that teachers should have in their class, I think it's per the ped, in fact, as I know it is, it's twenty, I believe.
Yeah, it's twenty, yes.
Right? So you'd have to get like a waiver each year?
I've had to get a waiver for the last two or three years when we've had over a hundred students. So yes, we've, we've done that.
So that, that's, I just wanted to voice that concern.
Yeah, a lot of times, I don't know if I've mentioned this before, uh, kindergarten, twenty, you're right. And we do put an instructional aid with those kindergarten students. And then as they go from first to, if I'm not mistaken, third grade, they do an average of classrooms. They don't want you to have more than twenty-three on an average. So if you happen to have twenty-four, twenty-five in a classroom, which, you know, that'd be great cause we'd have more kids, but usually the average is, is twenty-three per, per second and third. So we meet those averages and we always met those averages pretty much.
Are you gonna have any parking problems, picking up scoons from parking?
Uh, no, I don't think, I think it'll get better because now we're going to probably let kindergarten, first grade out at the normal time that we can let them out right now. And then second grade, we're gonna let them out at, uh, two forty-five. So I'm hoping if we can get those people out, they usually, they're usually out by about two thirty, our kinder and first pickup parents. And then by two forty-five, I don't think we'll have as many problems as I thought, as I initially had thought we would because to have K two pickup at the same time would have been, you know, kinda rough. But now that, we're gonna release at two twenty-five for kinder and first, get them off on the buses and then two forty-five for second grade. So mornings, we'll see how that works out. Usually it's not as bad because they don't all come at the same time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.